Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise? I will call upon James Pluniak, an Eagle Scout with Troop 9 here in Greenwich, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And James, thank you very much for coming tonight. James is going to share some information with us about scouting in Greenwich. James Pluniak. Excuse me. James.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is James Pluniak, an Eagle Scout and proud member of Troop 9, and I serve as the youth representative to the Board of Greenwich Council of the Boy Scouts of America. First, on behalf of the council, I would like to thank the members of the RTM for this opportunity to share in some of the achievements of scouting in our town. Scouting in America: Who We Are Nationally. The Boy Scouts of America provides the nation's foremost youth program of charter development and values-based leadership training to its more than 2.6 million youth members, with more than 1 million adult volunteers in nearly 300 local councils throughout the United States and its territories. Scouting provides a program for young people that builds character, trains them in the responsibilities of participating citizenship, and develops personal fitness. Who We Serve: Boys 6 to 10 in Cub Scouting; Boys ages 11 to 17 in Boy Scouting and Varsity Scouting; Young men and women ages 14 to 20 in Venturing and Sea Scouts; Young men and women ages 14 to 20 in Explorer Career-Based Programs; and Boys and Girls from Elementary to High School in Learning-for-Life Character Education Programs. What We Do: The Boy Scouts of America prepares young people to make ethical, moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them values of the Scout Oath and Law. Scouting in Greenwich: Who We Are Locally. In 2012, the Greenwich Council Boy Scouts of America celebrated its 100th anniversary. Chartered in 1912 with noted author naturalist and BSA founder Ernest Thompson Seton, as the first council president, Greenwich Scouting has been delivering quality programs to local youth for more than a century. The Greenwich Council is unique in that it serves only one town. This distinction is largely due to the fact that Greenwich is arguably the birthplace of scouting. In America, scouting has strong presence in the town of Greenwich through Cub Scout Packs, Boy Scout troops, venturing crews, and explorer posts. In 1960, Greenwich Scouting dedicated their 249-acre property as Ernest Thompson Seton Scout Reservation. Camp Seton offers campsites, lean-tos, and cabins, as well as several buildings to meet in two lakes, miles of hiking trails, an Olympic-sized pool, boating, archery and shooting ranges, a climbing wall, a nature education center, and more. In addition to a vibrant summer camp program open to all area youth, Seton Scout Reservation is used year-round by scouts for camping, including campery and cubery events, the Klondike and fishing derbies, and by local partnering organizations for their events. A local resource shared with the community where partnering organizations' needs have been uniquely met. A few examples: Greenwich Schools team building, the Police and Fire Department's training, Greenwich Emergency Medical Services (GEMS) basing, and even local utilities providing basing for out-of-town crews in a time of need. Who We Serve: Currently, the Greenwich Council serves 28 scouting units consisting of Cub Scout Packs, Boy Scout troops, venturing crews, explorer posts, and learning-for-life groups. Nearly 500 dedicated volunteers make it possible for the 2,600 local boys and girls to learn values and have fun in these units. Further, we strive to serve at-risk youth through our Scout Reach program, which provides financial support thereby broadening youth participation while being ever more inclusive. What We Do: In 2010, Greenwich Scouting, our 100th anniversary year, concluded the large-scale project Good Turn for Greenwich, a local call to service to improve our community through the volunteer efforts of Greenwich Scouting in collaboration with the community and civic organizations by supporting and participating in 100 Good Turn projects in recognition of the 100th anniversary of both the Boy Scouts of America and Greenwich Scouting in 2012, culminating with the completion of 120 Good Turn projects, which included the participation of 2,217 volunteers logging 11,905 hours of service to the community at a value of more than a quarter million dollars. The spring of 2013, the Greenwich Council recognized 23 scouts at the annual Greenwich Scouting 2013 Eagle Recognition Dinner for having achieved scouting's highest honor. Throughout the course of the year, scouts and units participated in a wide variety of community service projects and events, including but not solely limited to the following: scouting for food and the construction completion, collecting 125 crates of food and incremental cash donations for Neighbor-to-Neighbor's Program; storm preparation and readiness, Storm Sandy; various town and group cleanup projects; marched in the town's St. Patrick's and Memorial Day parades; supported the annual 4th of July Town Program; cemetery cleanup and veteran grave decoration; honored and comforted families of deceased scouts and friends of scouting at memorial services; prepared and sent holiday care packages to our troops serving overseas; ordered the Arrow Trail Crew Work at Seton; historic cemetery cleanup; and Thanksgiving food drive and holiday basket preparation. And last but certainly not least, Eagle Scout projects benefiting the Autobahn Society, local churches and faith-based organizations, the Greenwich Land Trust, Armstrong Court Community Garden, Greenwich Parks and Recreation, and others. Building upon a strong tradition of participating in national scouting events, the council again sent a Boy Scout contingent to the 2013 inaugural Boy Scout Jamboree at the Bechtel Summit Reserve. In addition, other local units attended the Philmont High Adventure Scout Ranch in New Mexico. Continuing the adventure in scouting. For more than a century, scouting has helped build future leaders of this country by combining educational activities and lifelong values with fun and adventure. The Boy Scouts of America believes and through experience knows that helping youth is a key building a more conscientious, responsible, and productive society. On behalf of the Greenwich Council and all associated youth served, thank you for your time, attention, and continued support, and happy holidays to you and yours.
James, thank you on behalf of the RTM for coming tonight and giving us that information. Congratulations on an excellent presentation. You're a wonderful representative of the Boy Scouts here in Greenwich. I'd also like to thank Kevin O'Shea, who is the Scout Executive for the Greenwich Council, for making these arrangements tonight. Thank you very much. All right. Welcome to the final meeting of the current RTM term. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our October 28 meeting, the reading of those minutes will be omitted. Are there any proposed changes to those dropped minutes? Hearing none and absent objection. The minutes, as proofread by Mary Ferry, stand adopted upon unanimous consent. This being the last meeting of our current term, we do bid goodbye to many of our members, and several of those are long-serving members, and there have been some requests to offer comments regarding the retirement of some of our members. We will begin with Lucy Krasner of District 5.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, members. District 5 would like to make some comments about Mary Ferry since this is her last meeting. District 5 would like to share some comments about Mary Ferry, our esteemed district leader who chose not to run again this year as a delegate to the RTM. Since 1988, Mary has been an active and involved member of the RTM, becoming our chairwoman in 2000. She runs a tight, fair, and efficient meeting. From 2004 to 2009, she was vice chairman of the Town Services Committee and most recently has been an integral part of Legislative and Rules. She was a delegate to SWRPA from 1988 to 2006 and was vice chairwoman of that organization from 1990 to 1996, after which she served as treasurer for five years. Mary's early life was spent in the South. She was born in Atlanta and graduated as valedictorian from her high school in Chattanooga, Tennessee, and then from the University of Tennessee where she earned a degree in physics. After graduation, she worked at General Electric on a project to develop nuclear propulsion aircraft. Mary says it was her junior high school civics teacher who sparked her interest in government. This led to her becoming a member of the League of Women Voters in 1961, and she continued this membership after moving to Greenwich. For more than 50 years, Mary has been a member of the League of Women Voters. She has worked on a number of studies conducted by the Greenwich League, including their town government study, the solid and hazardous waste study, and the ethics study. From 1982 to 1984, Mary was president of the League of Women Voters, and in 2011, she was awarded the League's highest honor, the Mary Award, which had been established earlier to honor two prominent women who were coincidentally also named Mary. This award is given annually to a long-term League member who has been an outstanding participant in the organization and a leader in the community. Mary is a very unassuming and modest person who has dedicated many years of service to the town of Greenwich. Her presence on the RTM will be missed by all, especially her fellow committee members and her constituents from District 5. In the RTM directory, Mary lists her occupation as community volunteer. That is indeed an understatement. So many of us are unaware of her work because endless proofreading and other work is done behind the scenes. Doug Wells, the chairman of the Legislative and Rules Committee, credits her with being the committee scribe. She looks at the underlying documents when she meticulously reviews all the items which come before the RTM. Her institutional memory is remarkable. It is not unusual for the town's law department to call Mary to get historical perspective on legal documents that are being prepared. She proofreads every resolution at the back of the budget and all ordinances to make sure they are in line with the town charter. She has proofread the charter and the RTM rules where they have been amended. She is like a one-woman auxiliary legal department. Mary, we will miss your insights, your memory, your excellent suggestions and advice. Thank you for everything that you have done for us and for our town. We ask that this be in our... We ask that these comments be put in the minutes of this meeting and a copy sent to Mary and her husband.
Thank you. Jenny Crowe, Chair of District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, guests. I would first like to briefly recognize and thank the two most senior departing members of District 8. Nancy Chapin has served for six terms on the RTM. She started as an alternate on education, became delegate, and then secretary for Parks and Recreation, and most recently has served as alternate on the Public Works Committee. She has also served on the Board of the Garden Education Center and on the Conservation Commission as its liaison with Parks and Rec. We have appreciated Nancy's calm voice of reason in the district and her tireless work in support of our beautiful parks and open space in town over the years. Gordon Ennis has served for nine years on the RTM. He started as alternate to Josh Brown on Finance, worked his way up to delegate, and has now served two terms as chair of the Finance Committee. Gordon's focus has been to work as a member of the District 18 on behalf of the town to reduce costs and streamline government process. He made a major contribution to the analysis and cataloging of town leases. He also organized a cross-committee task force to vet the MESA project. Gordon is known for his excellent committee reports. He leaves a big hole in our district that will be tough to fill. We thank both Nancy and Gordon for their service to the district and to the town. I would also like to offer remarks and remembrance of Walt Pendleton. Walter Pendleton III died on October 30 of this year at the age of 88 from a chronic illness which he had battled for over 10 years. Walt was a member of the RTM in District 8 for eight terms, from 1983 to 1999, serving for many years as our delegate to the Social Services Committee. He was a veteran of the United States Navy, serving during World War II on the USS Quincy, which provided gunfire support during the Normandy invasion, and afterwards in the European Theater of Operations. He was still serving on the USS Quincy in 1945 when President Roosevelt was transported to and from the Yalta Conference. He was awarded the Victory Medal, the American Theater Medal, and the European Theater Medal to Stars. Walt was a very proud resident of the town of Greenwich and served the town in many ways. He was a member of the Greenwich Police Department, first as part of the Civil Defense and later as a special police officer, for over 50 years. He was one of the first EMTs on the force, taking the first class held at Greenwich Hospital in the 1970s. He also enjoyed spending time in the air and on the sea. He was a member of the Old Greenwich Yacht Club. His family were founding members. Mike Mason's dad taught Walt how to fly in the late 1950s, and in 1963, he obtained his private pilot light certificate. We are thankful for Walt's service to the town, and we ask that these remarks be included in the minutes and a suitable copy be delivered to his son, Will Pendleton of Greenwich, to express our sympathies to his family. Please join me and the other members of District 8 in rising for a moment of silence to honor Walter Pendleton.
Thank you.
Is there any other individual who would like to be recognized at this time? Yes, Betsy Fruman, Chair of District 9.
Those of you who follow these things may realize that Paul Curtis elected to not run again. District 9 has a big hole, but we still have one seat. I'm not giving up. I would like to reserve the right to speak about Paul if he decides not to fill our seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. I notified our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received and the need to amend certain of the resolutions on our call, there will be no consent calendar this evening. I will recommend that all but Item 2 be placed on our combined calendar, and we would then take up Item 2 at the end of the meeting separately. So at this point, is there a motion to suspend the rules to combine Items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 for voting purposes? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine Items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a 2/3rds majority to pass. All of those in favor of suspending the rules to combine Items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? That motion has carried. So, Item 1 now comes before us. This is an appointment that was postponed from our October meeting, so it is now currently before us. May we have the reports of our committees that considered this, beginning with Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Sertelman is coming up for an alternate, new appointment as alternate on the PCBA, Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. We met with him on November 14. The vote was 12-0-0. He's a very active neighborhood, active in neighborhood affairs. He's a magistrate of the Stanford Superior Court. He studies psychiatry and government and law. At present, he practices as an attorney, mediator, and arbitrator. We thought he was most appropriate for this board. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee interviewed Mr. Sir Tillman back on November 6. As Chris reported, he is a lawyer. He has a practice in Stanford with a focus on arbitration and mediation services. He has served as a trial referee, past president of the Hillcrest Park Neighborhood Association. He represented that community during the North Mayanis Sewer Project. He's interested in serving the town in a capacity that would leverage his experience. He's attended Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings. He's expressed a strong interest in getting educated about the issues facing the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. So he is being appointed as an alternate, a new alternate to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals. Our vote on Mr. Sir Tillman was 9-0-0. District 1, 3, 7 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 1. Item 2 now comes before, I'm sorry, Item 3 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? David Thompson, Deputy Commissioner, Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator.
Good evening.
Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, resolved that upon recommendation of the Commissioner of Public Works, approved by the Board of Selectmen, that the following private road be accepted as a public street. The acceptance of this road to take place, to take effect upon certification by the Commissioner of Public Works of compliance of the road with the Commissioner's requirements as to right-of-way, width, grade, alignment, drainage, drainagesments, and similar features.
Thank you, and that is the same as appears on the call. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 3 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Peter Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
So Finney Knoll is a new street. It's just a little cul-de-sac over by St. Catherine's, just north of the post road. We had Amy Seabert, Commissioner of Public Works, with us to explain this matter. Finney Knoll was originally built by the developer in 2004. It's a seven-lot subdivision. At the time it was built, it was engineered to all town road standards with the understanding that it would be transferred to the town at some point. Department of Public Works has approved the road. It's acceptable to the town, as Mr. Thompson explained, Ms. Seabert explained, that since this road is a small cul-de-sac, it would have a negligible impact on Public Works' road maintenance budget. Our vote on this item was 11-0-0. District 2 absent.
Thank you. John DeChappell, Chair of our Public Works Committee.
We echo the same sentiment. We voted 11-0-0 with District 1 absent.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, just before I give my report, I would also like to follow up with brief words about Mary Ferry. At our last meeting on Monday night, Mary told the Legislative and Rules Committee members that she hadn't run for reelection, so this is going to be our last meeting. We were first and foremost saddened because we've lost a great friend and a great ally, but mostly we were horrified because we realized that we're going to have to read all of these things now that Mary is not around to do it for us. So, we expect phone calls, Mary. We want you to call in with the changes.
You know, I did hear the town attorney say at your meeting that there is a desk in the law department for Mary that you can use anytime, so...
We took up the matter of the DPW request regarding Finney Knoll last Monday night. The previous speakers gave you the reasons for why the association wants to be made a public road. We asked Attorney McLaughlin whether anyone could provide us with an explanation as to why the town should take on this responsibility of a private roadway, and he could only defer those questions to Ms. Seabert of the DPW. However, she was at the land use meeting and couldn't attend. However, we heard through Attorney Fox that Ms. Seabert reported that the cost to the town of plowing and maintaining several hundred feet of roadway in a town that has miles and miles of roads is insignificant. Attorney McLaughlin did point out that all members of the Finney Knoll Association are in favor of acceptance of this road as a public road. Mary Ferry noted that the resolution failed to name the road, which is kind of important since we're looking to pass a resolution that refers to a specific road, and so we took up Mary's suggestion to include the name, and so at the appropriate time... Let me give the vote first. Our vote as to legal order was 10-0-0 with Districts 1 and 4 absent. Our vote on the merits was 8 in favor, 1 opposed, and 1 abstention. District 2 voted against this item, and District 9 abstained. So at the appropriate time, I would make that change. So, the resolution was changed in the second line. The word "following" was deleted, and after "private road," we inserted "known as Finney Knoll Road." So it'll read, "Resolved that upon recommendation of the Commissioner of Public Works, approved by the Board of Selectmen, that the private road known as Finney Knoll Road be accepted," and the rest of it is as it appears on the call.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. We can adopt motions to amend upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the proposed amendment of Item 3? Hearing none and absent objection. That amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Oh, I'm sorry? Yes?
It just says Finney Knoll, not Finney Knoll Road, and I wondered if Knoll was in effect like it's like Finney Knoll, not Finney Knoll Road? If that could be clarified.
Mr. Wells, the question was, is the name of the road Finney Knoll Road or just Finney Knoll?
I don't know.
All right, but your motion...
Our motion is to say, refers to it as the road. We assumed it was a road.
All right. Does anyone know? Mr. Tice?
Yeah, I know that Finney Knoll is what the sign says anyway in Mexico.
All right, then why don't we... Mr. Wells, I did accept your motion. I guess, Ms. Edwards, you're moving to amend... So, we did adopt, we did adopt that motion upon unanimous consent. We can... No, 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 no. You can now move to amend what we currently have.
Thank you. I amend the motion to Finney Knoll as mentioned in the...
So your motion is to amend what is currently before us by deleting the word "road"?
And having Finney Knoll, which is how it's presented in our attachments.
All right. I'll ask our law department, do we, do we know... No, I understand that. I just want to get clearance from our town attorney. That's acceptable. All right. So, there is no objection... So, there is no objection by Deputy Commissioner Thompson on behalf of the Public Works Department. So, is there a second to Ms. Edwards' motion to amend? That is a motion to amend by deleting the word "road." It has been -- Ms. Caldwell. For what purpose do you rise?
I have item three in my hand.
And I'm here.
All right. Ms. Caldwell, let's just lay procedurally where we are. We now have an amended item three before us, which named the private road as Finney Knoll Road. What is currently before us is a motion to amend by taking the word "road" out. Discussion on that motion to amend. Ms. Caldwell.
Included in the call identified as item three in the explanatory comments is an application for municipal improvement to the Town of Greenwich for a project Finney Knoll Road acceptance.
So, you're opposing this pending amendment?
I--
We have to decide tonight. I mean, unless you want to put this off, but I don't--
I'm perfectly happy with Finney Knoll Road if that's the way the application was filed for municipal improvement, and if that's the way we just acted on it.
Ms. Edwards, it's very dark out there. You see, it's hard to see who actually is -- oh, and then, okay. Ms. Edwards is speaking, then, to be followed by Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator and all our colleagues here. Though it does say on that first project name, all the other materials refer to this as Finney Knoll, which is the page next, followed by the Finney -- witness, the Finney Knoll associates who put this together as Finney Knoll. So, I really think that to put Finney Knoll, which is like a lane or a boulevard or some other descriptive, it's too much to have it Finney Knoll Road, though it's very literative. I prefer just saying with Finney Knoll, which makes sense because it does go up to a little bit of a hill and incline. So, that being the case, I think that we should stay with that.
Kind of remind you about Grassy Knoll.
Yes, like a brat. Like a brat, yes, correct. Thank you.
All right, it does say Finney Knoll on the map. That's part of our -- all right. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening. I was just going to confirm that according to the town real estate property records, there are nine properties, and they're all identified on Finney Knoll.
All right. I think that's enough discussion on this. Is there any objection to the pending motion to amend by deleting the word "road"? Hearing none and absent objection. Ms. Edwards' motion to amend item three has carried. All right. Discussion, further discussion on item three. Item four now comes before us. Barbara O'Neill, Acting Chair of our Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The resolution is resolved that the Board of Education be authorized to accept an awarded grant of $30,000 for the Greenwich High School Police Community Partnership Project.
Thank you. And that's a substitute resolution, correct?
Correct.
All right. Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this item, beginning with Earth Porter, speaking on behalf of our Finance Committee?
Our Finance Committee heard from Dr. Lorraine Termini, who is the dean of student life for the high school. The vote on the motion as presented was 12-0-0. We were particularly impressed with the outreach aspect of this initiative, which was really led by Dr. Termini and by School Resource Officer Franco. There are a total of 25 organizations within the community that they reached out to to make sure that there was understanding on the results of work that was led by a group called PBIS, P-B-I-S, the acronym standing for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support Team, which has been active at the high school particularly for a number of years. This particular initiative led to being aware that a state grant was to be given to focus on improving the effectiveness of the development of pro-social skills and database problem-solving, particularly as relates to minority students. You can read in the explanatory notes that there were a majority of incidents ranging from expulsions on one extreme to suspensions and just disciplinary problems that affected a number of students, the majority of which were minority students. We were particularly impressed by the fact that this certainly is consistent with what most on the Finance Committee viewed as the philosophy of the Town of Greenwich, and that a positive step was being taken in that regard.
Thank you. Mark Pruner, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
This resolution was presented to us by Barbara O'Neill of the Board of Education. The vote on it was 10-1-0, District 4 absent, and District 12 voting against it on the belief that it was too small a grant to handle a project of this magnitude. Our discussion in general was along the lines of what you heard from the Finance Committee, so I won't go in detail about it. However, at the appropriate time, I do have an amendment to the substitute resolution. We were informed that in order for these funds to not only be given to the Board of Education, but for them to expend them, that we needed -- that there needed to be language appropriating it to them. So, we're proposing an amended resolution that would read as follows, "Resolved that the Board of Education be authorized to accept an awarded grant of $30,000 for the Greenwich High School Police Community Partnership Project," and then our amendment is, "And that same shall be in appropriation to the education budget for this program." Thank you.
All right. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Once again, we can adopt amendments upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to the proposed amendment? Does everyone understand what is being proposed here? All right. Is there any objection to that language being added? Hearing none. The Education Committee motion to amend stands adopted upon unanimous consent. Discussion on item four. Item five now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolved that the Town of Greenwich accept a gift valued at $267,750 for the Bruce Park Improvement and Beautification Project. Further resolved that the Town of Greenwich wishes to acknowledge Barbara and Ray Dalio for their gift and continued support for community enhancements.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and members. The Parks and Rec Committee took item five up on Tuesday night with Joe Cicliano, Director of Parks and Recreation, presenting the item to us. I'd like to give you the details because it is such a special thing. Item five is a gift valued at $267,750 for the Bruce Park Improvement and Beautification Project. This is a personal gift from Barbara and Ray Dalio. There are three components to the gift as described in the explanatory comments and by Joe Cicliano. Joe began by describing the project as a compromise between need and beautification, and that the parties involved had looked at the historic landscape plan for Bruce Park when considering what work should be done. This gift helps the town offset the cost of work at Bruce Park, thus allowing funds to be used in other areas in the parks. Should be noted that rain gardens will be used throughout the area to assist with drainage issues. If the gift is accepted tonight, the tree work will begin in January, February. Drainage work will be done as weather permits. New asphalt for the new paths will be installed when weather permits purchasing and the availability of asphalt. There are three main areas of work. The first one is a total amount of $101,750. It includes a pathway of 2,600 linear feet, five feet wide, along the remaining portion of Wood Road, Davis Avenue, and Indian Field Road, which will complete the loop with the current sidewalk on the south side of Bruce Park Drive and on the east side of Wood Road. The existing storm drain just north of the intersection of Bruce Park Drive and Wood Road will be cleaned and investigated in an effort to determine how it is functioning and to determine if any corrective measures are needed to help remove the water that collects there. This area experiences flooding during rain events, and significant freezing occurs in the winter as a result. The breakdown of the $101,750 is $7,500 for engineering, $2,500 for drainage investigation, $85,000 for the walkway work, and $67,500 for drainage and a rain garden. The second area to be addressed is an improvement of $20,000 for an area of the park which is bounded by Bruce Park Drive, Davis Avenue, and a pond that lays off to the east, and at one time was home to a rose garden which has since died. Excessive rainwater collects. Drainage will be added to prevent flooding again. The breakdown of those expenses, $7,500 for engineering, $10,000 for drainage and a rain garden, $2,500 for drainage investigation. The third component of the improvements is $146,000. This part of the improvement involves management and care of shade and ornamental trees throughout Bruce Park. Approximately 25 days of tree work will be done under Bruce Spamen's supervision, Bruce's tree warden and superintendent of parks. That will include planting of new trees and shrubs to replace the original ones. The breakdown of the $146,000 is as follows, $50,000 for pruning for tree care, $46,000 for tree enhancement and care, and $50,000 for future flower gardens. The vote of my committee was 11-0-0 with District 9 absent. It was with great pleasure that our committee reviewed this gift. We wish to express our appreciation to Barbara and Ray Dalio for their generous gift to support and improve Bruce Park, one of our cherished town parks. We would like to have these sentiments reflected in this evening's minutes of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Earth Porter, Vice Chair of our Finance Committee.
That was eloquently presented. The feelings that were shared within the Finance Committee were very much the same as they were in Parks and Recreation. The Finance Committee vote was 12-0-0 in support of accepting the grant, and we also urge Parks and Rec to appropriately thank the Dalios for their generosity and their community sensitivity and support.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Karen Foseliotis, former member of District 7. Welcome back.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, honored guests, and my former colleagues of the RTM. Tonight, I'd like to thank the Dalios for their generous gift, and although I am sure that you will all vote yes, to urge you to vote in favor of the town's acceptance of this gift. Our town has been blessed with the generous gifts of many individuals through the years. Robert Bruce's legacy is Bruce Park, which has seen many changes since he donated it to the town in 1908. As a Bruce Park regular for the last eight years, you can see me in the park in the early morning and late afternoons, walking my dogs, no matter what the weather is. I was there today. I have seen Bruce Park at its best and worst. As unofficial spokesperson for the park, I can attest to the great team of individuals in the Parks Department who are caretakers of this park, but their numbers have diminished over the years. I have brought attention to the poor drainage that has caused the ducks to frolic in flood ponds in the middle of the forest and roadways that became impassable. Thanks to this gift, I'm hopeful that this flooding will be greatly mitigated. The completion of walkways around the park loop is needed, and of course, the continued maintenance of trees and other plantings will be enhanced thanks to this gift. While not in the current plan, the existing walkway that circles the tennis courts to Woods Road and around are in dire need of replacement, and I hope the Parks Department will budget money in the upcoming budget discussion so this can be completed. You know I have to get that in. As a frequent patron of Bruce Park, I will close by thanking the Dalios with a big Yankee huzzah. That's Connecticut Yankee, not New York Yankee. And I know that you will vote to do the same. I hope the Dalios' vision for Bruce Park will cause others to follow with similar gifts so that we can maintain and enhance the great jewel of Greenwich, that is Bruce Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item five. Item six now comes before us. Mr. Von Keiseling, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Mr. Moderator, on behalf of the Appointments Committee, item number six, "Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring 12/31/2015." Aubrey E. Mead, Jr., PE.
All right. This is offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee, so it does not require a second. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this? Who are we going to start with? Mr. Berg, Chair of our Land Use Committee?
Good evening again. So, the Land Use Committee met last Monday night. We met actually jointly with Public Works, and we interviewed Mr. Mead jointly, also with John -- item seven, John Stan Kunis, and item eight, Edward Schmelz, who is the chairman of the Flood and Erosion Control Board. We had sent them a number of questions in advance, inquiring about the role of the Flood and Erosion Control Board, how it works, what it actually does, and we learned a great deal. The Flood and Erosion Control Board identifies and prioritizes flood control projects in the Town of Greenwich. It relies on resources of the Department of Public Works and outside consultants. They have prioritized 65 flood control projects in the town, taking into account a number of factors, including the density of the population affected, the number of acres and lots impacted, the severity of the drainage problem, the environmental quality of the project, the extent to which easements are required to implement it, project feasibility, project impact on emergency services. They, as a result of their work, and they have actually costed out all 65 projects, the total price tag is quite enormous. There are 10 very high-priority projects that affect public safety. For example, the flooding on the Post Road near the high school that actually can prevent emergency vehicles from getting across town. The town has successfully partnered with the state and with the Army Corps of Engineers on some of these projects, however, that will require funding by the town for most of them, and there is competition, as you know, for town funding of capital projects, and it's been difficult for the Flood and Erosion Control Board to obtain funding for its projects. The Flood and Erosion Control Board nominees think it would be helpful to add a member to their board at some point who has expertise in interfacing with the town and particularly with the BET in seeking financial support and funding for these projects. All three of these nominees, including Mr. Mead, a longtime resident of our District 8, former RTM member, they are all professional engineers. We had no question about their qualifications, yes, sorry. Our vote on Mr. Mead was 10-0-1. I can give you the vote on the other --
Sure.
Our vote on Mr. Stan Kunis, 11-0-0, and on Mr. Schmelz, also 11-0-0, District 2, absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling, do you want to put the other two in front of us as well, since we're apparently going to get reports on all three items?
So, you're going to do them all at once, or--
Well, they're all combined, so we're going to take one vote on all of these combined items.
I appreciate it. Would you like the Appointments Committee report?
Yeah. Could you just put item seven and eight before us?
Certainly. Item seven, "Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring Item eight, "Resolved that the following named persons nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board for a term expiring 12/31/2015."
All right, and item seven is John Stan Kunis, and item eight is Edward Schmelz. All right, those, again, being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee, do not require a second, so those three items, six, seven, and eight, are now before us. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report. I'm sorry. And did you want to--
I'm going to go first.
All right. Mr. DeChappel with the Public Works.
I thank you for combining them because we looked at it that way. We spent a good deal of time talking about what the Flood and Erosion Control Board does. It really is a child of the Public-- It really is a child of the Public Works Committee because they have to work through us, and also through the BET because that's where the bucks come from. And talking about dollars, last year, they only had $560,000 for the whole last year. And really, to even begin to make a dent, you're talking about over $2 million. There's a number of projects that badly need remediation, including the post road where the high school is. One of the best solutions, unfortunately, it sounds big, is to raise the level of the post road at the bottom of the U there so that more water can pass underneath when there's heavy flooding. We also talked about the Strickland Brook and a couple of other major flood and erosion control things that need to be done rather sooner than later. So, we're hoping that next year, we can get more financing for that. We're very impressed with the three gentlemen. Town of Greenwich is very lucky to have their services, and our vote on all three of them was 11-0-0 with District 1 absent.
Thank you. Mr. Von Keiseling with the Appointments Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We met with Aubrey Mead for this renomination on November 14th. The vote was 12-0-0. Mr. Mead has been on the board for many years. He has fought the battle with Mr. Schmelz to find flood zones, develop solutions for controlling flooding in those areas, price the necessary capital projects, and prioritize those projects for the town DPW and Selectmen and the BET. Mr. Mead's renomination was held up by a lengthy effort by the Appointments Committee to get the Board of Ethics to rethink its opinion. When Mr. Mead's term was ending, he wrote to me as Chair that he could not recommit for that board since an opinion which he sought from the Board of Ethics virtually excluded him from acting on the Flood and Erosion Control Board due to only an appearance of conflict of interest. Mr. Mead owned property within one of the many flood zones in Greenwich. Not an unusual thing. The Appointments Committee considered that this ruling would exclude almost any qualified candidate. It took almost a year to clear this issue up. Despite requests for advice and guidance from the Board of Ethics, they declined comment, stating that this was a matter of policy and that was the business of the RTM. So, our committee spent a few months holding hearings and developing policy on the appearance of conflict, which basically stated that a candidate could not be disqualified for a simple question of appearance, that specific information and facts had to support this conflict disqualification. After this, Mr. Mead felt comfortable in putting himself forward for renomination. A resignation by the Flood and Erosion Control Board Chair and the senior member mid-term, both of them had to be addressed first, and then the subsequent alternate positions so that the board maintained a full complement. Please note that Mr. Mead and Mr. Schmelz continued to serve uninterrupted. In fact, Mr. Schmelz was elected Chair of the FECB, replacing Mr. McLeod. Finally, this October, we were able to clear the decks for addressing Mr. Mead and Mr. Schmelz's renomination, and a meeting was set for early November. We are pleased to recommend unanimously Mr. Mead for another term as well as Mr. Schmelz. The other item was Mr. John Kunis. We also saw on the 14th, voted 12-0-0 as we did for Mr. Schmelz. Mr. Stan Kunis is an alternate on the FECB, has served well, and has considerable engineering experience. He takes a seat of retiring Chair Anthony McLeod. Mr. McLeod's term expires on the 31st of this month. Therefore, we are nominating Mr. Stan Kunis to a full term ending in 2017, there only being a few days left in the old term. No candidate has been discovered to date to replace Mr. Stan Kunis's alternate seat. We have asked members of the professional community to scout out prospects. We also ask that you of the RTM and those viewing on television try also. We would appreciate that help. I would like to take this opportunity during this being my last meeting as Chairman of the Appointments Committee to thank all the members and alternates of this committee for not only their faith and support for me, but their extraordinary effort in interviewing and screening hundreds of nominees that have come before us. My district chair analyzed the last two years of the RTM call and discovered that your Appointments Committee acts on 58% of all call items. This is almost twice the workload of the next RTM committee, which handles some 30 or so percent, and does not count the many meetings dealing with non-call items and the fact that the committee meets on a regular and unpredictable schedule. We'd also like to thank the Selectmen for their cooperation. For six years, the Appointments Committee has met on time by 8:00 and finished on or before 10:00 PM, with a few exceptions where the committee thought it should go late. We have handled some very controversial and emotional nominations with poise, courtesy, and respect. We have gained the respect and confidence of the Selectmen's nominees and their fellow board members. We have helped these appointments where we could to do their best. After 15 years or more on this Appointments Committee and six years as its Chair, I came on when I was town officer, and John Caldwell was there when I started, and it is time to turn over the gavel and let someone else grow into the challenge. As I leave to take the leadership of the greatest district in Greenwich, District 8, I am proud of this committee, and I am sad to leave it. Fortunately, the moderator has assured my succession and the new leadership of the Appointments Committee. I wish them the best of success. Thank you.
Discussion on Items 6, 7, and 8. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, combined calendar, Items 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, and proceed to poll your delegation. I would like to take this opportunity, before we take our final item up, which is Item 2, to remind our members, if you are those who are members of the new term that will begin January 1st. Many of our members begin to set dates in their calendar. There was a mailing that went out with this call listing the regular meeting dates for the coming term, and I wanted to alert everyone that our rules do provide for those dates that were listed. But one of the dates, in fact, our April 2014 scheduled meeting conflicts with a religious holiday, and that date will change from April 14, or at least there will be a proposal to change it from April 14, a Monday, to April 16, a Wednesday. I intend to put a resolution on the call of our January meeting, setting forth all of the regular meeting dates for the new term, so we will all be on notice and we can make any changes at that time and all be aware of what is coming. And I will make that proposed change as part of the resolution, and we will then adopt it or amend it as the body sees fit. So, the one change is April 14 to change to Wednesday, April 16 in 2014. All right. That now brings Item 2 before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Incidentally, I do want to acknowledge John Mistracchio of District 10, who came up with the idea of doing what I just described, putting a resolution at the beginning of the term of all the meeting dates, and we could then make any adjustments at that time. So, John, I thought it was a good idea. Thank you. Irv Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to just take a moment, if I could, to welcome Dave Thompson back. Dave is not only a dedicated, professional member of the Public Works Department, he's a dedicated community guy. I had the thought, at least, that maybe when this loop around Bruce Park got done, that that's where you were going to start your new workout schedule. But how about a hand for Dave, who has undergone some tough times? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Resolve that it is a sense of the candidates of this meeting that the candidates for Moderator and Pro Tem for the 2004-2015 Representative Town Meeting may file their names with a brief statement of their qualifications with the town clerk, honor before June, December 27, 2013, for inclusion in the call of the January 2014 meeting.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 2 has been moved and seconded. May we have the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee? Doug Wells, its Chair.
Mr. Moderator, this item comes to us by way of a petition signed by 78 members of the RTM and is designed to encourage any candidate that intends to run for Moderator or Moderator Pro Tem may provide the RTM with a statement that informs the RTM of the candidate's qualifications for either position. We had Irv Porter, one of the signatories and one of the circulators of the petition, help us with this matter last Monday evening. He noted that this Sense of the Meeting Resolution is identical to the one brought to the RTM in October 2011 in anticipation of the January 2012 vote for Moderator and Moderator Pro Tem. When the full RTM considered this resolution two years ago, it passed 81 to 46 with 13 abstentions. Mr. Porter said that this resolution is designed to provide transparency and to provide all RTM members, and particularly newly elected members, information concerning candidates and their qualifications for these important positions. We also heard from Moderator Byrne, who believes that this resolution will provide the newly elected members objective information about the candidates. He pointed out there has historically been an average turnover of about 20 to 30% of our membership each election cycle, a significant number of voters who would likely know very little about the people they are electing to these positions. Mr. Byrne argued that not having this resolution in place would be akin to having the Board of Selectmen present us with the name of a nominee for one of our public agency positions on the night of the RTM vote with no information concerning the nominee's qualifications. We also heard from District 8 RTM member Jenny Crowe, who took the position that this resolution is faulty in that it should not be made by way of a Sense of the Meeting resolution. Ms. Crowe researched all of the SOMRs that have been considered by the RTM over the last 15 years, and she stated all of them are resolutions that the RTM considers in order to inform the town and other public agencies of its position, but not to inform itself, that is, inform the RTM. She is of the opinion that procedurally, the SOMR is not the vehicle by which we should present this matter to the RTM. We then turned to our town attorney, Wayne Fox, to seek his opinion as to legal order of this Sense of the Meeting Resolution. He explained that an SOMR, in broad terms, is, quote, "an expression of the will of the group," close quote, and if the RTM saw fit to pass this resolution, in his opinion, it would be in legal order to do so. We then took up an amendment by Kip Bergweger, who moved to change the language of the resolution by inserting certain language in it. However, our vote on that was 5-5, so that motion to change the resolution failed. The question then arose as to why the date of the submission to the town clerk is set at noon on 12/27/13. It was explained that that is a deadline for submitting items to the town clerk for inclusion in the call. That would ensure that any candidate's qualifications would be included in the call packet that is mailed out shortly after that date. We took two votes on this matter. The first as to legal order, our vote on the item as to legal order was 10-0 with Districts 1 and 4 absent. We then voted on the merits. Our vote was six in favor, four opposed. Those voting in favor were from Districts 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, and 12. Those voting against it were from 8, 9, 10, and 11. Some of the reasons expressed by those who are opposed to this resolution were because this resolution might discourage nominations from the floor, which is an option that is always available to the RTM. There will be a new session beginning in January, and the RTM members in this session would be governing the rights and obligations of a new RTM body in January, and we should not pass any resolution that discourages the right of anyone to run for any office. The majority felt that it was simply made good sense to allow for a disclosure that will better inform us prior to a vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 2. Mr. Porter, District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The history lesson on this goes back to 1996, and the Sense of the Meeting Resolution that was passed two years ago was worded exactly the same as that 1996 resolution, and this resolution is worded the same. I take note from the historian, I guess tonight is Mary Ferry Night, from the historian that when this was dealt with two years ago, that the vote, to move this toward a rule for the RTM, which was three in favor, eight against, as I recall, Mary, we didn't get to that point, and there was no movement within Legislative and Rules to have this become a rule. But on the sentiment that existed within the Legislative and Rules Committee, which is typical, I think, of what we experienced in District 6, this is intended to be a civil way of ensuring that we're well informed about who our leaders are or who our leaders could be. It is really that simple. And you can use a lot of analogies. One would be that if you're a member of most any organization, that the Constitution and bylaws usually provide a vehicle by which officers are nominated, leaders are nominated. Ours does not. It comes from the spirit of the town meeting. There is no implication here to change that spirit, to change the fact that pursuant to our rules, that you can nominate from the floor. So, if we've got the responsibility, basically, to manage ourselves, which we have, we think that this is a useful way to do it, and on that basis, we would encourage you to support the motion.
Further discussion on Item 2. Christine Edwards, District 8.
Good evening again, Mr. Moderator and colleagues. I was actually somebody who was nominated off the floor after a number of years where nobody had even come forward to challenge a position in this case as Moderator Pro Tem. I think anyone who's going to run, whether it's beforehand or off the floor, if you will, is going to be somebody who should be able to speak on their feet, be able to deal with things as they come up, and therefore, be able to be a leader for the RTM. That's number one. Number two, we've all seen that Sense of the Meeting Resolutions have absolutely no teeth anyway, and I say that from a point of so many times having seen Sense of the Meetings, which just really give an opinion, but there's nothing really behind it. My view would be if anyone wants to give information beforehand, we have emails, we have other ways to present that. But certainly, we don't want to discourage anyone from wanting to think after December 27th that this might be a position that they'd like to have, and they should be able to come forward, introduce themselves, and give some background in why this would be a good position for you to look at for that person as a new leader for the community here. I don't like the Sense of a Meeting Resolution that in any way tends to abridge the ability to be a real town meeting right off the floor, because that's really what you look back to in most town meetings. In most organizations that I've begun or I've been with, the people who are the officers are kind of elected the year before, the slate is accepted, there's no vote that's being taken place. An executive committee has put them in place. This is a much more organic body, and that way, I'd like to see it remain that. I think this is not a valid thing to even have a vote on tonight. If somebody wants to run, fine. They can let everybody know via email and not by December 27th, but they can also speak off the floor, which I think is one of the most valid things we have here as the RTM. We need to be able to speak on our feet. We need to see whatever's happening in organic flow and adjust to it, bring information in detail forward, and not be just prescribed by date and time. We have to be able to work from the floor. Mr. Moderator has had to do that many, many times as we move forward with whatever question may come up, as has the Moderator Pro Tem. So, these are organic positions that have flow, and that anyone who can stand up here and speak and introduce themselves should be able to put themselves on the floor to run. Thank you for your attention.
Kip Bergweger, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow members of the RTM, guests, I just want to be clear on what is being proposed this evening. The language says that candidates may, I say may, file with their names with a brief statement. When Mr. Porter was describing the purpose of this, he said it will ensure that people of members of the RTM are well informed. Ensure would be shall. Ensure would be shall, but this is may. So, when you're interpreting this and when you're reading it next January at our meeting, and someone offers a nomination, if they were to do so, don't hold it against them, because this is not mandatory. It's may. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item Two. Mr. Harkins? John Harkins, District Six.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, I rise to speak against Item Two. There's nothing inherently unorderly, unfair, or even disorderly about the current system, which encourages active participation by any and all. Candidates may choose to announce or not. Lobbying can take place. Voices will be heard, and yes, even some voices we may at times prefer not to hear. Some may construe the Sense of the Meeting Resolution, or variation thereof, as being a vote of confidence in the current moderator or moderator pro tem. The petitioners themselves may have signed the petition for that very reason, and that's laudable. It's a worthy endorsement of those people who've served ably. But it's useful and important to test whether or not an idea makes sense by changing the cast of characters to see if the results would be equally valid, equally fair. Consider for a moment, what if the person or persons holding those positions were less well-liked, capable, or effective? Would the Sense of the Meeting Resolution make it easier or harder to elect new officers? If the Sense of the Meeting Resolution would make it harder, then it would be less fair. In addition to the benefit of incumbency, the Sense of the Meeting Resolution, especially without the option to announce spontaneously, can only serve to restrict the entire body's hearing of a candidate who arises to assume a position of responsibility. If the body wants not to elect that person, we can and have said no on more than one occasion, probably more so than not. Why restrict the opportunity to hear new ideas? You, as I, may have heard some members of this body assert that the RTM shouldn't become political. I'm not sure why that's an inherently bad or good thing. Interestingly, my dictionary relegates a pejorative aspect of the word to the sixth definition. But whichever position you adopt, does this change, enhance, or restrict partisanship? This Sense of the Meeting Resolution does not remove the politics from the decision, but it could, in the service of partisanship, serve to quell new voices, and we would be the less for it. The very spirit of the traditional New England town meeting can be characterized by the spontaneity and encouragement of the widest possible participation. That spirit celebrates the value of responding to valid and valuable new information, including the response of a delegate who is willing to put his or her name forward even at the last moment. The proposed SOMR may be well-intentioned, but it could encourage in the mistaken belief that orderliness is more important than spontaneity, placing the entire body's choice of leadership into a back room, cigar smoke-filled or otherwise. To sign the petition is one thing. To vote tonight differently is hardly inconsistent. Signing the petition said that you wanted to bring forth a petition to air it, and that's laudable. Pondering the evidence, that which you've brought to the forum, and that which you hear tonight, is deliberation, something we're charged with doing. So, please vote against this motion. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item Two. Mark Pruner, District Ten.
I'll be quick. I rise in support of this motion. Let's talk some real politics here. The last speaker talked about spontaneity in the town meeting. We're talking about electing important positions here in this town. It's not something that I want to do on a whim. I'd like to know who's running. I'd like to know what their positions are, and I'd like to cast an informed ballot. All this suggests is that the people who think that they would like to run for that position announce who they are in enough time so that we can examine their position, and we don't spend time wasting our time listening to candidates who, if they spontaneously pop up as some submarine candidates, really don't stand much of a chance of getting elected. So, let's hear what they have to say. Let's have them tell us who they are, and let's have them campaign in a true political fashion. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item Two. Jenny Crowe, District Eight.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I rise to speak against this resolution. The content of the resolution does not offer a clear and effective solution to a clearly identified problem, nor is the Sense of the Meeting Resolution the appropriate vehicle for addressing problems with internal RTM procedures and protocol. First, as to the content of the resolution. The stated intent of this item is to encourage candidates to file their credentials without requiring them to do so, but that's not what the language says. As written, the Sense of the Meeting grants permission to candidates to submit their credentials by the close of the January call. There's no need for the RTM to grant permission. Candidates who wish to file are already free to do so without a Sense of the Meeting. The last time this item was discussed was at the October 2011 meeting in advance of the 2012 election. Some of you will remember that this meeting was rescheduled after a power outage, and there were 80 members absent. The rationale provided at that time was that in the 2010 election, there were 20% new members, and the election for the RTM Moderator Pro Tem resulted in a tie vote. The implication was that new members had inadequate information to make an informed vote in this instance. No data was provided to support this contention. An earlier Sense of the Meeting passed in the mid-'90s was referenced as an appropriate way to address this issue. This original resolution was offered by the Legislative and Rules Committee in October 1995 in anticipation of the election following David Tobin's announcement that he would step down as moderator. There's no indication that this Sense of the Meeting was meant to be more than a one-time measure applied in an extraordinary circumstance. It was not generalized to apply to the Moderator Pro Tem position, nor was it offered again or taken up as a rule change in the years that followed. I was curious about how other RTMs handle this issue. The two RTMs in New England closest in size to our own are Brookline, Massachusetts, with 248 members, and Framingham, with 216 members. Both of their moderators are elected on the town ballot rather than by the RTM itself. Neither one has an assistant moderator position. Darien, with 100 members, has an active nominating process for the moderator elected by the body, but also specifically provides in their rules that this does not preclude nominations from the floor. As to the Sense of the Meeting, there are many common-sense behaviors that we expect from members of the RTM. Some are described in the rules, but the vast majority are left to the discretion of our members and enforced by informal feedback and natural consequences within the body. Our rules describe a Sense of the Meeting Resolution as a procedure for formally expressing a concern or collective viewpoint on issues of local, state, or national importance. This is regarded as a statement of public opinion. The Sense of the Meeting Resolution is the vehicle by which we communicate RTM sentiment on important issues of the day to the Board of Selectmen, the BET, and our community at large. Sense of the Meeting topics over the years have included a home for the CoscoB library, FAR regulations, the Plan of Conservation and Development, open space, treetops, Nathaniel Witherall, the Western Greenwich Civic Center, tiered parking in downtown Greenwich, leases of town property, charter amendments, the CIP Committee, the CoscoB Power Plant, and so forth. It is unusual to use a Sense of the Meeting Resolution to address our own members and to give them permission to perform a specific task by a date certain. I believe that when we use our external voice to address internal housekeeping matters, we diminish its impact and credibility with external audiences. At the orientation session for new members, the moderator urged the new members not to vote for a Sense of the Meeting Resolution that they're unsure about, simply on the grounds that it's not binding anyway. I hope you will join me in voting no on this item. If there's reason to question the adequacy of our operating protocols or our rules, let's review the rules and address the issues there. Thank you.
Ed Didakis, District One.
Mr. Moderator, I move the previous question.
All right. It has been moved and seconded to cut off debate. The motion for the previous question is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor, if you are in favor of immediately proceeding to vote on Item Two, you should vote in favor of this motion for the previous question. All those in favor of Mr. Didakis' motion for the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Item Number Two, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on our combined calendar items. Those are Items One, Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, and Eight. Those in favor, 159. Opposed, one. Abstaining, two. The combined items have carried. We will need to await the resolution of the pending vote before proceeding to adjourn. We have the result of the vote on Item Two, the Sense of the Meeting Resolution. Those in favor, 79. Opposed, 76. Abstaining, six. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection. This meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home. Merry Christmas and a healthy new year to you all.